For at 7:02 PM, we are at the Woodcock Administration Building in the James Rice Conference Room. This is the Town Council Public Meeting. Everybody can join me with your pleasurable allegiance, please.
Pleasurable allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of December 11th, 2023.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining?
One abstain.
Motion carries seven zero to one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive summary, executive session minutes of December 11th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? None, I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries seven zero one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve joint Town Council School Committee minutes of January 8th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Motion carries five zero to two. Town Councillor, Community Announcements. Let me just start. Obviously have a lot of people here, press here. Can't imagine what it's for. Everybody knows the news regarding the book Woke and its removal from the Martin School Library. Before I open it up to other councillors, I just want to remind everybody present and everybody here tonight, this is not something that the Town Council handles. This is a matter for the school department and the school committee. The school committee has not yet weighed in on this. They have not had a meeting to do such. I am unfamiliar with the process that led to this decision or the individuals directly involved with it. I do know that they are presently reviewing all of their procedures and policies school-wide. And although that we have no authority over this whatsoever and there is nothing that we can make a motion on, vote on, or handle from our position, I do understand that oftentimes people want to hear from their elected officials, so I will allow comment on this about this issue. And I would just like to start by saying with all due respect to all those involved, banning books is against everything that we stand for. If you don't like speech, the answer is always more speech. It is never less speech. There is a big difference in my mind between age-appropriate school materials and banning ideas that might be divisive or problematic. The fundamental tenets of liberty suggest that we have our right to speech and the schools are where we hone our thought processes and where we hone our ability to make arguments and to take information in. It's a very dangerous road for all those that get up in arms when school systems, not ours, school systems talk about banning books such as Huck Finn, Tom Sawyer, To Kill a Mockingbird. They better be equally up in arms about this as well. The content shouldn't be the issue. The idea of banning books should be the issue. And I look forward to the school's response to this. I know that they are already involved, before this happened, already involved in an in-depth review of all of their policies. And I look, I look very forward to how that, how that turns out. That being said, are there any other councillors that have anything they would like to add about this or anything else? Councillor Gould.
On, on a lighter note, I was just going to make a comment, put in a plug for all the town job opportunities. We have a water quality supervisor, a building inspector, animal control officer, math teacher. There's a lot of good jobs out there on the website, so please check it out. Thank you.
Councillor Slabogan.
All I'm going to say is I feel what you just said was very eloquently said and needed to be said. I am with you 100%. I do not believe in banning books or art of any form whatsoever. It is our opportunity to speak our minds. That's why we're here. And the ability to do so through both visual, verbal, and written is an amazing opportunity for us to have. And the idea that we are going to take that away from anyone, it's just disgusting to me as, as an American. So I thank you for speaking and I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Councillor Donovan.
I agree with everything Councillor Slabogan just said and Councillor Vice President Simmons. The only thing I'm going to add, when all, when all this broke, one of the things that came to my mind is a movie and a Broadway play called 1776, which is about the Declaration of Independence. And my favorite scene in the movie is when they're coming to do the final vote to open up debate and it falls on the representative from Rhode Island, Stephen Hopkins. And the line he says is, "In all my years, I ain't never heard, seen, or smelled an issue that was so dangerous it couldn't be talked about. I'm for debating anything." And that's a principle that is built into our Declaration of Independence and our Constitution, and it's, it's something we should uphold. And moves like this are designed to stifle that debate and, and prevent opposing viewpoints from being heard. And it's, it's simply not, it's indefensible. And we can't support it and we don't support it. That's all I have to say on that. I, I would just really quickly, change topic very quickly, since Representative Scanlon is here tonight. Back on Christmas night, there was a terrible accident down in Somerset. A family was killed when a driver on the wrong side of the road drove into their car. The family that died, the Arudas, were friends of mine. The boy that was killed, Jacoby, 15 years old, was a teammate and a friend of my son's. And when I, a couple of days after the tragedy, I heard about a bill in our legislature, H3435, to do something about wrong way driving. And I took a flyer and I reached out to Representative Scanlon and Senator Feeney and asked them to support the bill. Well, not only did they support it, they both get back to me within minutes and signed on as co-sponsors of the legislation. And since then, four other legislators have also signed on, and I believe that's entirely because of the efforts of Representative Scanlon and Senator Feeney. So I wanted to publicly thank them. Sorry. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Okay.
I do, I do.
Councillor Gregory.
I didn't prepare anything, but, uh, so bear with me. Hopefully, the message is well received. But I'm just going to be fully transparent and honest because in times like this, this is all you can do. Over the weekend, my wife, who's educated, who works at North Attleboro High School, provided me with this article and I had to sit down when I started to read it. It completely undermined everything that I've been doing in this chair over the last three terms of trying to bring this community together. From our town manager to the assortment of folks that have served on this council. And it's just disheartening to see one action by a, you know, review committee or a couple of folks can ultimately drag us all through the mud. And we're all attached to it. It's embarrassing to me as an African-American male. It's embarrassing to my wife. It's embarrassing to everybody on this council. And what's ironic about this whole thing is we don't know who was on the review committee. You know me, Doris Gregory, I'm a town councillor and I'm embarrassed. I'm sitting here as the only black face in this room and I'm embarrassed. I don't feel supported. I know students in our schools don't feel supported. And we've been talking about this for six years now. This was the opportunity of a lifetime to stand on the right side, put it up in the air and say, "We celebrate diversity." This was the opportunity. It fell right in your lap and you fumbled. You fumbled on the one yard line. You fumbled. You failed me. You failed everybody else. It hurts me to my core. I have my chin up high. I always, I'm smiling. I'm always happy-go-lucky. And I like living in North Attleboro, but I got multiple calls and they're, "Doris, you're a town councillor in North Attleboro. What's going on over there?" I'm like, "Uh, I don't know what's going on over here." It's crazy. Ludicrous. Like if, if you don't have that same energy, then something's wrong. You should be like, "Why am I tied into this?" The school committee didn't necessarily have a direct hand into it, but the superintendent had an opportunity to do right by it and there's no accountability. None. But everybody that lives in North Attleboro will forever be tied to this and be associated with it. And it makes no sense. The optics are crazy. It's a PR nightmare. You ban a book with a brown-faced young lady on the cover. Like, come on, who, what are we trying to do here? Create World War III? I mean, what are we trying to do? We're trying to bring folks together. And since this chair, we've been through the George Floyd incident. Wasn't in our control, but we were able to band together, figure out how to work and navigate through that. The Black Lives Matter movement wasn't in our control. We were able to band together. This was in our control. We did this. We did it. So I say all I have to say, I can no longer occupy this seat until real change is happening. Because with me here, it doesn't matter anyway. So I'm telling you, I'm not going to sit in this chair anymore until we get real change. And I can provide a whole list of solutions to make it right. Starts with getting the book back on the shelf. Maybe not tomorrow, but it needs to happen in the very near future. I will not come to another Town Council meeting until that happens. I'll be on the phone tomorrow with Ms. Dan Tenucci. I'll meet with whoever else I need to meet. But my work here is meaningless. And it's apparent. So enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you for your time.
Doris?
Yep.
Thank you, Councillor Gregory. Actions have consequences. Anybody else have anything they would like to add on this or any other topic? Councillor Costello.
I just want to start by saying the book is still available to teachers to use for lessons or what have you. But echoing what everybody else here said tonight, to ban something because of an idea that might be divisive or that makes us uncomfortable is completely un-American. We come together by exposure to ideas that make us uncomfortable or that we might not understand. That's how we come back together as Americans. This, this crap cannot keep going on, especially when it's banned because of the title and not even because of the content. Age appropriateness is one thing. But to ban something that we don't like because it's an idea that we just don't have much exposure to or just have a doubt with is, forgive my language, a lot of bullshit. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add? Okay, moving on. Town Manager Report. Town Manager Report.
Councillor Vice President, Member of the Council, thank you for the opportunity. Let me start off with just a few notes that you might find interesting. You have my Town Manager's Report. You may have seen an article in the paper today about flooding as well. And had a call from the Governor's Office in response to supplemental budget that was submitted on behalf of the Governor earlier. North Attleboro, looks like it is going to receive some relief for the September floods. So that's on tap. We don't have a lot of details or an exact date when that would happen or the exact process of how that flood relief will be made available to our citizens. But once we have that, rest assured that we'll get that out to the community and to all those who are impacted as well for that. So we're continuing to watch that. I know FEMA is still working on our behalf for that case as well. Also, we're still maintaining our winter weather watch. Some more rain in the forecast this week. Not as much as we've had in the previous rainfall events, but it's still coming. So once we, we started to ease up from the cold snap here today, look for actually a pretty warm day this coming Friday, but rain coming with it as well. So we'll continue to watch that. And I know we're going to hear from Mark Hollowell tonight about flooding and drainage issues and what DPW's response has been. I did have the privilege and honor of making a few remarks this Saturday at a global war on terrorism. And I did bring the list of sponsors on the poster behind you, Councillor Vice President, to your left, over your left shoulder. We are uniquely a town that now has recognized the service and sacrifices of the folks that served and took part in the global war on terrorism. So great effort by Stephen Travers and all of the veterans organizations to fundraise and bring that. It was, it was an honor to accept that on behalf of the town and have that unveiled in barrels of Veterans Park. So if you get a chance, please stop by. It's a, it's a great monument. Also had the opportunity to participate in a, an unveiling of Sisters at Heart AED station that has been installed at Community Field. That took place on the 15th. We were able to go out there. Again, Sisters at Heart is a nonprofit that came together addressing stroke and cardiac events and formed a public, private partnership with the town to address placing AEDs in very public places. They've agreed to place five AEDs throughout North Attleboro. We have one installed. However, a portion of their funding was cut by the Governor's 9C cuts. What they did get an earmark for, some of that was pulled back. You'll see a measure from me tonight asking for your support to cover this later. So more on that. Did conduct a number of interviews with North TV. Have a couple more scheduled. But also completing the, the ask that the council had on the contract elements. It's included in your Town Manager's Report on our discussions and how we're going to put the contract together for public relations support with North TV. So you have that. We'll be entering into a contract hopefully by the first of February. So if you have any input or feedback regarding that and if there's any issues or concerns, please let us know, reach out, and we'll do our best to address those right away. But I ask you, it's in your packet and you take a look at that. There will be a new, and Chief Coleman's here, firefighter swearing-in ceremony tomorrow and promotions in Penning, so that's happening. Looking forward to taking part in that. Everybody is invited. That'll be at the middle school. Please come out for that. Some operational and economic development update notes. One Health Department. We have recovered the, the basement of the Town Hall. It's now no longer flooded and we've got it halfway repaired and we're still doing a little painting in some areas, but Health Department has moved down. Most important about this is Lenore's Pantry. They'll be able to begin operations again and take in donations. Food security is an important issue here in town and it's something that Lenore's has been able to respond to and help out over the years. And we're looking forward to having that up and fully operational. And soon they'll be moving to the address at 451 Elm Street where the Fisher College was formerly located at. We did conduct a Safety Committee meeting for our quarter, the past quarter with our, you know, designated individuals for that. We've had a number of slips, trips, and falls that have shown up and, and so we're looking to address that. We've got some training scheduled and hopefully we'll get that under control and make sure that that's not a systemic problem. Continue to have discussions over Emerald Square Mall development in and around that area, right? A lot of discussions about the sewer pump. I know Mr. Hollowell's been involved with that and do appreciate all his efforts on that. It's also tied to the Allen Avenue School measure that you'll see tonight about us looking to get from you some guidance and go-ahead for the sale of that property, right? The school building project, the designer selection is complete. Doran Whittier was selected as the designer, right? We have a community meeting on the 8th of February. Once we have all the details for that, we'll gladly put it out. I think that's when we're going to reach out to the public and the community and talk about what's been done so far, what the process looks like and an introduction to the design team for that project. So looking forward to that. 451 Elm is currently a town property. We do have a tenant scribble time. We're working to firm up the contract with them. We are exploring and looking at how to roll out a voucher program for town employees that might be able to take part if they need childcare. So that would be a part of the rental agreement, but more to follow as we get that developed and we work through the attorneys on that. Just an update real quick on the 40B project at Draper Avenue. You can see the timeline of events there of things that have already happened. Now just take your attention to the last note there. The next meeting is with the ZBA on the 20th of February. They will review the traffic conditions and the study report that has been issued. Hopefully we'll have that in hand in the next few days and be able to digest that and take account of that. So looking forward to that information. And all the abutters and folks that are interested in that particular project, please, please attend that meeting and make your voice be heard. Annual Town Elections. You got Pat Dolan here tonight. You'll hear from her in the public hearing portion tonight. But Town Election scheduled for April 2nd, right? Please see the town's website for the current positions that are available and open with deadlines. If you're interested in running for a position, now's the time to do it, right? Now's the time to do it. So check out the website for all the deadlines. There was one small change, minor change. There was an additional position that was made available. So we've updated that and it's on the website. Plenty of opportunities for folks to serve and we look forward and hope you do too. Solid Waste wants me to tell you that the stickers applications are going out in the mail this month, right? So look out for those in the mail. And let's shift quickly into financial matters. The FY25 budget build is ongoing. We're actively meeting with all of our departments. The Assistant Town Manager is leading the capital improvement program process and getting all that input from all of our folks. The 12th of February, your next scheduled meeting. I'm hopeful that we will be back in Town Hall at the lower level conference room at that meeting, but it will be the preliminary budget presentation. We'll take all the, the raw data that we receive from the department heads, all the capital programs, all of our revenue estimates, right? I have yet to see the Governor's Budget yet, but there's a lot of news on the Governor's Budget and what she's proposing. And I'll talk about that at the preliminary budget, but look forward to that on the 12th of February. You have in your packet from me tonight, the second quarter FY24 report of spending. Again, a lot of this is talked about and discussed with the State of the Town address at the earlier meeting. And, but this gives you run dates through the end of the first quarter and where we're at. There are no significant issues of note or that require any attention. At this time, we are on glide path, both in revenue and in expenses within the budget that we've established. I will tell you that there are two items that are actually doing very well right now, and that's our sale of compost. I think we've almost paid for the trommel screener. More in, it's a single year. So it's running extremely well. And then the Opportunity Fund and our interest investment, courtesy of North Attleboro Electric, again, running as expected based on current interest rates with the $14 million investment instrument that NAEED was able to provide for the town. They did vote for their annual pilot payment. It's in line with expectations. And that is included in your packet as well this evening, so you can see that. A couple of personnel and thanks to Councillor Gould for mentioning this, right? Just want to say thank you to our Veterans Agent, Steve Travers. He has submitted his retirement. He wants to retire, retire. He's already retired from the Army one time and he'd like to retire from the town now. He, he served faithfully for the past few years. He will be missed. And, you know, just looking at the ceremony that we had on Saturday is an indication of the hard work that he puts into this community. So we're very thankful and we wish him the very best going forward. Building Commissioner, as you saw, that was available. Mr. McGrady had submitted his resignation earlier last month. We wish him the very best in his future endeavors as well. Animal Control Officer, she submitted her resignation as well. And currently Jennifer Petraitus, who works down at the Animal Shelter, is filling in as the ACO there as well. The Conservation Administrator, we have a number of folks that applied. Although I would tell you that all of the applicants were not equal, but one did stand out. You have received that resume and the job description for that. We have made an offer pending some, the background investigation that's required and a confirmation but tentatively to start the 5th of February as the interim until approved by council on the meeting on the 12th. Director of Facilities, we've been interviewing a number of candidates for that. We've whittled it down to two remaining candidates. They will, we tried to set it up for this week, but they will be interviewed. We can only get the schedules to work Tuesday of next week, so we will have hopefully a clear choice for the town as a director of facilities. And this evening, Dan Olet is here. He serves with, on the North Attleboro Housing Authority. This is a Commonwealth position, but he has taken a position elsewhere tonight. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Representative Scanlon for some recognition.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening, Dan. Dan and I have had the pleasure of working together in a collaborative partnership through these past three years. The work that happens at the North Attleboro Housing Authority is extremely important and impacts all of us. The number of calls that I get about the need for affordable housing in my office has reached record levels. But at the end of every call, I can always count on Dan to help put us, to help put people in touch with the right connections to ensure that we continue to advocate for permanent supportive housing. So I thank you, Dan, for your years here and for your many years of leadership. And be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Daniel Olet in recognition of his many years of service to the North Attleboro Housing Authority. And the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. So congratulations, Dan.
And I also would like to add my well wishes to Dan as he goes on to the next adventure in his life. I can tell you that it's been a pleasure to work with you, sir, and appreciate all the support. If you don't know, our senior center is currently a property that Dan allows us to use and we have a lease with them and we're looking forward to actually breaking that lease and moving into 451 Elm. So again, but thank you, sir. Thank you for everything. And Councillor Vice President, that concludes my report this evening, subject to your questions.
Does anybody have questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Resident and community comments. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the council this evening? State Representative Scanlon.
Hi again. Good evening. I do want to be clear that I'm aware that the Town Council has no formal role in this issue. But I felt due to the timeliness of the nature of this issue that it was best to address it here tonight just for us to talk as people and how we feel as leaders. I first heard about the recent book ban while I was at the State House in Boston preparing to listen to the State of the Commonwealth address. It was a very normal day. Several colleagues approached me and asked, quote, "Your town bans books now, huh?" I said, "No, that would be crazy. That would never happen." And then they remarked, "Read this," referring to a recent Boston Globe article. North Attleboro was one of five towns to ban a book in the entire Commonwealth. The administration might not call it a ban, but let's be clear. No child may access or read the book Woke, written by Mahogany Brown in the school's library. I am angry that all this happened in May of last year and I had not heard about it. And no alternative policy has been brought forward by the administration to put a path forward to prevent this from happening again. In full transparency, I've read the poems collected within the book. The poems have themes of living with a disability, being black- The poems have themes of living with a disability, being black, equality, and being kind to others, to give a few examples. After reading the policy that stipulates the process involved in removing a book, it perplexes me what of the enumerated rationales it states in the policy that a group of people could have used to remove a book from a library. We don't know the enumerated rationale the complaint used either. We also don't know how the librarian felt on this issue. Was the PTO, the school committee, students, people of color, anyone consulted? One person had the power to come before a group of people and demand a book be banned just because they didn't like the title. Think about that for a second. According to the policy, the superintendent would have had to concur with this group that the book be taken off the shelves. And just this afternoon, we were sent a statement that the process was followed with fidelity, another word for good faith. We still have questions. Is this book removed in all school libraries? Why should one book be available to one school and not the other? My friends, our country has already had the fight on if things should be considered separate but equal. While some might be asking, what's the big deal with banning a book? The town, Commonwealth, and the country I was raised in and that you were all raised in are founded on several important guiding principles. According to the Declaration of Independence, we believe that all men are endowed with certain unalienable rights, including the right to read. In our country, we have a First Amendment that's been interpreted by the Supreme Court to say, quote, "Students do not shed their constitutional rights to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gate, Tinker, 1969, and the special characteristics of the school library make that environment especially appropriate for the recognition of such rights," Pico, 1982. No superintendent or principal in the world can ever erase any of those truths. Our Constitution says, "We, the people," all means all, whether we like it or not. In 1845, civil rights leader Frederick Douglass, a former resident of Bristol County, where we currently live now, said, quote, "Once you learn to read, you will forever be free." Douglass, like others, understood the value of unhampered intellectual exploration. Now, in 2024, we are banning books in Massachusetts, what's known to me as the cradle of liberty, just because a couple people don't like the name of a book. We know that this could only be the beginning as we face the threat of people wanting to ban books about students with disabilities, or LGBTQ plus youth, or even our ability to speak freely. We must do better. We must set the example. Our government belongs to all of us. It's us as individuals. It's you. It's me. It's the teachers. It's the librarian. It's the students that woke up that day that didn't get to read the book because one person said they didn't like it. Our students and people from all over are looking to us to set the example. How will we be judged by this history, by history for these moments? We have to give our young people hope that we will move forward. We have to give them hope. Today, as the state rep, North Attleboro alumnus, resident, queer person, and human living in 2024, I stand with every student at Martin School in the district who wishes to do a simple thing. Read a book about being kind to each other freely, and I hope you take the same stand as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Scanlon. Does anybody, anybody else like to address the council? Sir?
As you know, I'm leaving town, and I'm going to say that I've been in housing authorities at this moment for over 30 years. North Attleboro is the one town that made the housing authority feel like part of the town. I thank the Town Manager, Michael, for that. Of course, COVID kind of gelled it all, but this is the town that really made the mark in my career. Thank you. And thank you to the councils for allowing that to happen.
Thank you for your service. Would anyone else like to address the council?
I have a question about the flooding.
Sure. If you could, please step up and state your name for the record.
My name is Ken Holroyd. I am one of the lucky residents who ended up with water in my house. I understand a significant amount of that water came from town properties and that the current drainage systems are not sufficient. I understand that the town is putting in a lot of work to try and figure out how to address this issue and fix it. But what should we as residents be doing in the meantime to record the damage and mitigate any further issues?
Town Manager Borg, if you could weigh in, please.
Council President, thank you. And Mark Share is going to talk about this topic tonight that's scheduled. But I also just tell you, use the 311, the big red 311 app, to let us know when you do have damage, right? And record it. If there's anything that's particular that Mark and his team can get out there and identify and address, we're going to do that. And he'll share more remarks tonight about what the town is doing and the ongoing efforts. And I do, I am so sorry that this has happened. Don't know if your house has flooded previously or in other years. It's just been, we went from drought to, you know, inundation with a lot of rainfall. And we're looking to see where we can make adjustments in our current systems and where it's appropriate. But I'd also encourage you to continue making your voice be heard and attend the Board of Public Works and their meetings and bring this topic up to them as well. And just, and if there's anything in particular that I think, you know, you believe I could help with, please, you know, come into my office anytime, anytime the door's open. Come on in. Happy to sit down. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, moving on. Before we get to the public hearing, I'm going to ask that we take a brief recess. Five minutes, please.[1008.63]
Ready to get back together? North TV, are we good?
Yes.
All right, folks, we are back from our break. Next up is a public hearing on Measure 2024-048, Approval for Elections Department to Opt Out of Mail-In Ballots for the Upcoming Election in April of 2024.
I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding Measure 2024-048, Approval of Elections Department to Opt Out of Mail-In Ballots for the upcoming election in April 2024.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Couldn't hurt. I'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Gould.
Yes.
Councilor Costello.
Yes.
Councilor Shanahan.
Aye.
Councilor Slabogan.
Aye.
I am a yes. Councilor Dunham.
Aye.
Councilor St. Pierre. Excellent. Motion carries. Councilor Slabogan, if you would read.
The public hearing notice.
The public hearing notice, please.
Town of North Attleboro Town Council, Public Hearing Legal Notice. The Town Council will hold a public hearing at the Woodcock Administration Building in the James Rice Conference Room at Sixmore Street on Monday, January 22, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. for approval of the Elections Department to opt out of mail-in ballots, not ballots, for the upcoming town election on April 2, 2024. This public hearing will be broadcast by North TV.
Thank you very much. Chairman Jaborg.
Council Vice President, Members of the Council, as we open the public hearing, we'd just like to start with a brief presentation from our Elections Department. And I know our Commissioners are here as well. So we'd like to turn it over to Pat Dolan and then move into the next part of the public hearing after that.
Certainly.
Good evening. My name is Pat Dolan. I'm the Elections Coordinator in North Attleboro. Behind me are the members of the Board of Election Commissioners, Neil Lambert, who's the Chair, Nancy Vigarito, Secretary, and Alexandra Colashto, a member. Our other member, Lisa Pollak, couldn't attend tonight's meeting. We work for the Board of Election Commissioners. We're a small department. If anybody's ever noticed, there's actually two full-time employees in the Elections Office. Okay? And right now, my coworker Janet is out on leave temporarily. She'll be back soon, I hope. This time of year is a very, very busy time for the Elections Office. The annual census is sent out in-- that was hard to say. The annual census is sent out in January. Updates to the household information are made at this time. The budget is being worked on, and election preparations are being done for both the primary in March and the local election in April. Next slide.
You got it.
This slide right here shows you prior to voting by mail. Two steps, three steps. Voter checks in at the polls. The voter marks the ballot. Voter deposits the ballot in the tabulator. Just remember that process. That's before we start with vote by mail. We're here tonight to ask the council to vote, to opt out of vote by mail for the town election in April of this year. Believe me, there's a lot of thought that got put into it. The Votes Act, which was signed into law on June 22, 2022, made several things that were put into place during the pandemic, made it permanent. One of these things was vote by mail. Next slide. Similar to absentee ballots, except you do not need a reason to vote by mail. Okay? Any voter can apply for a mail-in ballot, whereas with absentees, you have to have a reason. It must be available for all state elections, state primaries, and presidential primaries. It is also required for all local elections. This is since last year, 2022, when they passed the Votes Act, unless the city or town opts out. Now, last year, we allowed the mail-in balloting. This year, we've got specific reasons why we're asking you to opt out of it, and I'm going to go into that. Okay? But first, we're going to talk about voting by mail. The voters definitely like it. Okay? I've got a pile of postcards this high, and they just went out on Thursday or Friday of last week, that they've already sent in, that they want mail-in ballots. It's similar to absentee, except you don't need a reason. It is a labor-intensive process, from receiving and entering the postcards to mailing out the ballots. Now, we're going to go to the next screen. Now, remember that short little thing, prior to vote by mail? Now, there's 12 steps in the process. It may only be a few moments for each step, but multiply that by the number of postcards that we get. From receiving and entering the postcards to mailing out the ballots, checking in the ballots when they are sent in by the voter, keeping them filed, and interfiling them into processing, checking them off the voter list, advanced opening and advanced processing, to combining the two sets of totals from the early voting and election day processing. And this just goes into the 12 steps from the time we mail it out or the applications are received to when they're checked in, opened, fed through the tabulator. And in our case, a lot of times, we actually process them a little bit ahead of time. But that advanced processing also is labor-intensive. First, the voters send in or drop the application in the drop box outside the back door of the town hall. We then determine which elections they want to mail the ballots-- they want us to mail the ballots for. We then enter this into the state computer. Then, when the ballots arrive for the election, we print labels that tell us which party's ballot to send. Basically, we have poll workers come in and put the labels, the ballots, and the envelopes together. There's no magic machine that puts all this together. Believe me, I've looked. Okay? My big thing was, well, if we could get an inserter, this would take-- there's no such animal because of the size of the ballots. Basically, if you had, like, a letter size, you can get an inserter. Usually, we use the council's meeting room in the basement to assemble the ballots, seal them, put postage on them, and then mail them out. They're like Santa's elves down there. You'll have 12 to 20 poll workers sitting at a table, and they're just stuffing envelopes and putting labels on them, trying to make sure that the right labels get on the right envelopes, because it doesn't make us look good when they get the wrong ballot. When the ballots are returned, then we need to take them, open up the outer envelope, date stamp the inner envelope, mark the ballot in the system as received along with the date we received it. It is then filed until we process them. But just picture if you had 5,000 of those envelopes. When we talk file, you've got to interfile them constantly. Okay? Because we file them by precinct so that we'll be able to process them. When we have early voting in person, the ballots are handled the same way. Each day of the early voting, and in the case of the presidential primary, this is a week of early voting. Each day of the early voting, we mark the ballots in the system as being voted, and then, again, interfile them with all the other ballots. In-person early voting ends on the Friday before the election. Okay? Now, we're going to go to the application. Nope, next one. I'm sorry. Go to the next one. That's the application. See that little postcard? Mostly, you got one of those at home over the weekend, maybe Thursday or Friday of last week. If you didn't, you're going to get them real soon. What scares me on that is the one that says at the top, "Elections, all 2024 elections." That big pile of postcards that I have today, the majority of them are checked off, "All 2024 elections." They also check off, all the way down the list, presidential, state primary, and the election. But simply by checking that, if you don't opt out of-- if you don't vote and opt out of the early voting for the town election, that means our town election. So if you think, oh, well, not enough people vote in the town elections, this will be good. Okay? To all of a sudden be hit with maybe mailing out 5,000 ballots to people that aren't going to send them back. I'm sorry. We have a low turnout at town elections, but a lot of people don't want to vote them. This is not the time to try and see if it helps us get 10 more votes. Okay? It's just not. We've gone through this with the primary in 2022. We sent out almost 5,000 ballots. More than 1,000 never came back. Okay? It's not possible. Some of the people that got those ballots may have come in and voted in person, but definitely didn't do 5,000 vote-by-mail ballots. Okay? They didn't all come back. People asked for the ballots, but then they decided to show up in person. Stu over here is one of my wardens. He can tell you that, because in the year 2020, we spent the November election-- Stu was on the phone the entire day with Janet from my office. Both of them were tied up for the entire day with people that showed up at the polls with their mail-in ballots, because they didn't-- something on the news. They didn't want to trust it to the mail-in ballots. They said, I want to vote in person. Each one of those people, we had to check on our computer to make sure they hadn't already returned the ballot. So basically, we had two people that were tied up-- two key people tied up the entire day from, I'm going to say, 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. He had a bag of ripped-up ballots at the end of that election. I really don't want to try this for the town election this year, because we have a couple of other reasons that we're asking to opt out. But just to let you know that that Friday that early voting ends on Saturday and Sunday of that same weekend-- this is just before the March election. Okay? On Saturday and Sunday, we have anywhere between 12 and 20 poll workers come into the town hall. They work all day, both days. And again, Stu could tell you, in 2020, we were here till 1:00 in the morning. Okay? Trying to do this advanced opening and deposit so that we could process these ballots before the election, because there isn't time during the election to process maybe 5,000, maybe 8,000 ballots. Okay? It really puts a strain on the poll workers and on our machines. So we try to do what the state allows us, advanced opening and deposit. We're here all day, both days. One person has to read the voter's name from the envelope. Another person checks it off on the voting list. We then usually do advanced deposit, which is basically feeding the ballots into the tabulators, one at a time. We have a specific process that we have to follow that the state tells us. It is done one precinct at a time. When you're done processing that precinct, we seal the ballots and the envelopes and remove the memory sticks from the tabulators. We're not allowed to print or see any of those totals. The only total we can have is how many ballots we process, because we can count the ballots before they go through, and that's one of the items on our report. Okay? We can't see any of the totals until after the polls close on election day. That's the way it's set up in Massachusetts. Okay? We follow this process for each of the nine precincts. It's a long process. However, it's better than sending these ballots to the polls to be counted because of the volume. So now, yes. How to opt out of voting by mail? The selectmen, city council, or town council must hold a public hearing and a public roll call vote no later than 45 days before the date of the election. That's why we're here tonight. Okay? And here are the reasons that we're asking you to vote out of it. The timing of the two elections. The primary is on March 5. Our town election is April 2. This is showing you some of the key dates for the presidential primary. Okay? And just notice the bottom ones. Okay? From Tuesday-- not Tuesday, Monday, March 4 is the end for the absentee ballot applications. That means it's the day before the election. But if we go back to the early voting period, February 24 to March 1. Okay? Just remember that period, because that's going to play into our town election in just a minute. That's on our schedule. Okay? But this is the primary that we're talking about here. The ballots for the town election, I cannot order until 32 days before the election. There's a calendar. You can show us the town calendar also. We have a specific town calendar-- yep, next one. And this shows you the town calendar. And we're going to fall into some of those same dates. Okay? When I order the ballots, it's right at the end of February. Now, remember, we're just finishing up the early voting for the presidential primary. Okay? I cannot order them. The last day to withdraw is February 29 at 5:00 p.m. We'd like to-- I'd like to take the time to make sure everything on the ballots is correct. You know that when you were all running last year, I had to make sure that everybody's name was spelt. At one point, I finally sent it out and said, this is the way you're going to appear on the ballot. If you have a correction, let me know at this point. We like to make sure that that's all correct, your address is correct, and you know that we don't have you down at a name that's not yours or that it's misspelt. Okay? I like to make sure accuracy is extremely important. It doesn't go over well if your name is wrong. When we order the ballots, we must make sure that everything is correct, because we don't want to go through the expense of ordering another set of ballots because I missed a letter in your name or put the "I" before the "E", and it was actually after it. I will be ordering them on March 1. That is the final day of early in-person early voting for the presidential primary. On Saturday, March 2, and on Sunday, we'll be doing the advanced processing. So our office is very, very busy at this time. We're really busy at that time. Okay? And in between trying to order and make sure the ballots are all correct, and it's very hectic, we're running the advanced processing. We're doing the final preparations for the election on Tuesday, making sure that the ballots are all packed to go to the election, that the cases are all ready. It is very important that I order those town election ballots, that I not put that off a couple of days because, oh, I'm going to wait till-- it's just a little bit quieter. It has to be done. I don't want to add more stress to it and say, okay, it's got to be done because I got to get the ballots back here to mail them out. After the ballot is set up by the company, which in this case, it's ESNS, which manufactures our machines, and I approved it again, it gets sent to the printing company. Again, we approve. It is then printed, and the ballot's sent to us. When we receive the ballots, each box has to be opened. That's why they go in my office. Each box has to be opened. The ballot's examined to make sure there's no inconsistencies in the ballots, that we didn't get some other town. Those things happen because they're processing a lot of ballots. The early and absentee ballots usually are sent out to us priority or overnight mail. And it would be when they receive that we would begin sending the mail-in ballots to those voters. So if they checked off all elections this year, we would start sending them out. Just to let you know, we had the tri-county election in October. We received the ballots 10 days before the election. Now, picture if we're sending out 5,000 of them, that we're going to get them out within those 10 days before the election and give people time to get them back to us? It's like very hectic, very, very hectic. If there's a lot of mail-in ballots, then we run into a problem. Last year, we didn't because people had applications, but they weren't assaulted with the mail-in postcards at the time. Okay? If people filed an application, if they called us and said, I want a mail-in ballot, true, we'll send you out a mail-in ballot. My whole thing is that, right now, it's they're sending them out because the state is required to. They're getting them now, and they want mail-in ballots for the whole year. But they might not necessarily. Also, due to the September flood in the town hall, the council's meeting room is not available for use. Okay? It's under construction. We have used it as a processing area to set up. There's no option to opt out of the state election, so we do have to process those presidential primary ones. So when we start to mail out the ballots for that, we're going to have to find any space that we can use in the town hall, which means that anybody gets a spare anything in their office. It's like, okay, we're going to just set these two people there. They're going to mail out some ballots. Okay? We're going to be searching for areas to put them-- that little table that they have in the lobby downstairs. Yeah, we'll probably have somebody sitting there mailing out ballots. My thoughts on it are, next year, the 2025 local election, we will not need to opt out of the mail-in ballots. Number one, they're not getting this in January saying, do you want ballots for this year? We are sending those applications out every time that someone new registers to vote or if they change an address. We send out the applications. The applications are on our website. They're on every town's website. They're on the state website. I could even-- if people wanted to make sure that everybody, you know, gets to mail and vote if they want, we could send something out with our census. But to let you know, it'll cost extra money when we send out that census, that we can pay to have something sent out. Some towns do it with their dog licenses. We can send out an application, and then people could apply and get the mail-in ballots for the town election. We'd still have more time than we do this year. Okay? We can also check and see how the other towns made out, because I had a paper-- and I don't believe we left it in here. We took it out-- that showed last year's 2023 town elections, mostly the spring ones. So we're talking towns, not cities, that there was a very low turnout anyway. So we could check with those towns and see how mail-in ballots helped them or whether it made any difference in the-- I don't think you're going to see 90% participation in any local elections. But we can always check and see how that works out for other towns, because the only way that you could get out of the mail-in balloting is if you opt out. So in conclusion, we're asking you to opt out this year for these reasons. Number one, we're short-staffed at this time. We're right out straight. Even when Janet comes back, we will be right out straight, just trying to catch up. We had a few things that happened in the meantime, which was like, we just got state computers put in, and unfortunately, we were both out the following week. Then, it took another week and a half to get their IT to get the computers hooked up correctly. Okay? Now they're working. The expense, not only for the postage but for the poll worker expenses in prepping and mailing the ballots. We can flip to the next one. That's a timeline. Okay? Of just the things that we're doing January through March. Okay? We're-- December through March. We're already through with December. That's a good thing. We finally resolved the computer problems on January 8. Now, the nomination papers are available for the town election, and anybody that wants to run something, they should come in and get those papers pretty soon. We also send the UOCAVA ballots. That is basically overseas ballots. Okay? Military ballots. They have to be sent by a specific date. They've already been sent. January 20, we're required to send that. The census forms were mailed by the printer on 1/17. The state postcards started arriving in the mail the same day. The budget info is now due. I'm going to get back to working on that. Nomination papers are available until February 9. Usually, we turn around and update the census forms, scan the forms with no changes. We're now entering postcards into the computer for the mail-in ballots. We will spend a lot of time mailing those out. It's numerous phone calls regarding mail-in ballots. Today was the first day that we really did that, and I was glad that I had somebody in the office. However, she wasn't able to answer the questions that people have. It was one of my poll workers. So basically, our phone was ringing all day today. And this is just the first day of it. And like I said, I've got a pile like this. We didn't even count how many postcards we got. You've got to do party changes, because people now realize when they got those postcards that they're registered for a certain party, and they may not want to vote that in the primary. So now, they're doing party changes, which we have to do in the computer. We mail out the ballots for the primary. Early voting is February 24 to March 1. And then, again, it falls right into that computer. The advanced removal and processing is the 29 through March 1. And then, we order the town election ballots by March 1. Campaign finance reports. Unfortunately, it says reposting. It says reporting. Anybody that's been in my office within the last week or so, good for you. The rest of it is, I expect to see you real soon. Okay? Because we've got to get that year-end campaign finance done. Even though it's busy, they don't take that for an excuse. So as soon as you can. Next one. That's one that shows-- nope. That was the cost, yes. When we did submit in 2022, because it's an unfunded mandate, I submitted for almost $44,000. Okay? Which we have to keep track of all this while we're sending out these ballots. The state turned around and cut that by $20,000 and sent us 23. That's quite a difference than almost 44. Okay? I wasn't happy about it. Talked to them several times. The person that cut it and said, this isn't right. You know, you tell us to keep track of this. Why are you cutting this? Why are you cutting this? In the end, we got reimbursed $30,000, and I considered myself to be really happy with that because they weren't going any way. And it was $7,000 more than we had gotten from them. So in other words, it still costs the town no matter what we do. The state says we pay for that. However, I could tell you some of the things that they've told us in the first few years. Number one, during the pandemic, they did not put in enough to cover the 351 cities and towns. Okay? So they decided to cut everybody's, just to make it uniform. Okay? We're going to have to cut everybody's. The next year-- The next year, again, they did not put in enough, they put more than the first year, but they did not put enough in their budget to reimburse us for our actual expenses that they tell us to keep track of. We're glad that they pay for the mailing expenses, because that in itself is expensive. So we're short-staffed, the expense. It'll be difficult to find a spot in the town hall to process the mail-in ballots, and we know they won't fit in my office to do that. And the fourth thing is accuracy. I like to make sure things are right. You wouldn't like it if you got your name spelt wrong on the ballot, you'd look and say, huh, what is the matter with these people? They can't check things? So we're asking you to opt out of it this year. I don't anticipate a problem with it next year. The only thing looking forward, and I would hope that they improve each time we have mail-in ballots, early voting, we get a few more clues when we go to the conferences, and I keep hoping that they'll come up with some method of doing this a little bit quicker and a little less labor intensive. Hopefully, by four years from now, we'll have it perfected. That's all I have to say on it.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us at the public?
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Counselor Gould.
Yes.
Counselor Costello.
Aye.
Counselor Shanahan.
Aye.
Counselor Stilwagen.
Aye.
I am a yes. Counselor Donovan.
Aye.
Counselor St. Pierre.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Public hearing is closed. Is there any further discussion among counselors? Not seeing none.
Well, I just want to confirm, I believe I'm correct, but maybe just say it for everybody. Anyone who's disabled or otherwise can't get to the polls, they can do absentee ballots.
I'm sorry, I didn't harp on that more. Yes, because I actually had a slide in there. Anyone is entitled to file for an absentee ballot, and it will cover this election. The main thing is that I have a feeling that we'd get hit with 5,000 requests for mail-in ballots. Absentee ballot, we can handle. You just need a reason for doing that, which you said, disabled, or if you're out of town for that day, if it's religious reasons. Okay? There are reasons to file an absentee application. You can do that up until the day before the election. Okay? It has to be done before noon time of the Monday before the election. But anybody can file for an absentee ballot if they meet one of the requirements, and we will fulfill that, because we do that with every election, even before this mail-in balloting was done. And that we can handle, even if we got, you know, 500 requests for it, we could handle that, but I'm not so sure that we could if it was, you know, several thousand.
Is there any other discussion?
I have a quick question. Does that mean that anybody that's already sent their ballot back saying that they want the town, the town papers, that we're going to notify them?
Well, it doesn't say it specifically.
Oh, okay.
It says all elections this year, and it doesn't list the town one, it lists the state ones. However, we were told by the state that if we do not opt out, not us personally, but all the towns were told, if you do not opt out, that includes your local ballot. Now, some towns or cities might not even vote, you know, they vote every other year or what have you, so it wouldn't affect them, but if you don't opt out, that includes your town election ballots. And what we'll do is we'll turn around and put it out there on, number one, on the website and on the social media, that that does not mean your local ballots.
Okay.
Okay? That you're putting in for basically the three state elections this year.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Yes, I personally like voting in person, but I respect those that feel differently and think that generally they should be able to vote, you know, mail-in ballot. At the same time, I understand the election department has limited resources, and they do a fastidious job, as we all saw. So I support their decision to postpone implementing this again until next year.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
And thank you all.
Thank you for what you do.
I had the honor and the pleasure of being an election commissioner, so I understand the work that goes into it, how much you do, and how much you actually rely on our poll workers and our volunteer election commissioners in order to get ready for a regular election, minus the mail-ins. So I do understand, and I want to make it clear, that this is for this annual election only. We are not voting on not having mail-in ballots for future town elections, but where we have other elections coming up immediately prior to the local town election, it's just going to be an unimaginable burden on your short staff.
Normally, we start preparing for this, for the March presidential primary, in the fall. Okay? But we had a few things happen in the fall, too. We had that flood in the basement. I mean, it was a case of, okay, you've got to move all the stuff out of our storage areas, et cetera, things like that, when they came into, turn around and repair the damage and get the water out, things like that. So part of the time that we would have been preparing for some of this, which would be, we'd be preparing more so the labels, the envelopes, et cetera, that didn't happen. We just flew from, oh, September to all of a sudden it was December, and it was like, oh, boy, now it's moving, you know? And particularly this week, because of both the census and the postcards going out, so it's just a matter of, and I do have a couple of people that are helping out part-time to do the data entry, to get those postcards into the system. Okay? But again, sometimes government works slow. We're waiting for the IT to approve these people to be able to go into our state computer system, because they have a lot of security based on that. So basically, I've been waiting about a week for them to approve two people to actually be able to access that system. But we will get it done.
If there is no further discussion, I'll take a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve Measure 2024-048-approval for Elections Department to opt out of mail-in ballots for the upcoming election in April 2024.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. This is a roll call vote pursuant to the statute. Counselor Gould.
Aye.
Counselor Costello.
Aye.
Counselor Shanahan.
Aye.
Counselor Stilwagen.
Aye.
I am a yes. Counselor Donovan.
Aye.
Counselor St. Pierre. Motion carries. We are moving on in the agenda. Confirmations, thank you very much. Confirmations, none at this time. Subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee, Measure 2022-041, approval to repurpose remaining funds from previous school improvement projects to be used for the Early Learning Center Playground Project. Finance Committee met on this and voted unanimously to have this recommended for positive action from the council, as we have done in the past. We are making sure that funds that were previously approved but unused for various projects, leftover balances, we go to them to fund projects that are upcoming in the CIP or from next year's project list. There was one issue that we wanted to discuss. Nope, no, this one. This did carry unanimously. Counselor Boyd, do you have anything to add? Counselor Boyd. I just gave you, I just gave you a motion, and you no longer get paid. Well, if that's the case. Town Manager Boyd.
Council Vice President, member of the council, again, we were in front of Finance Committee and just asked for your support tonight for this measure. This, again, reaffirms our commitment to repurposing existing funds and other leftover dollar amounts from other projects into projects without putting any additional burden on the current budget or future CIP. We'd like your support for this project, as this is another perfect example of that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Measure 2024-041-approval to repurpose remaining funds from previous school capital improvement projects to be used for the Early Learning Center Playground Project.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Gould.
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed it. What, are we just revitalizing the playground, fixing the worn-down surface area, stuff like that?
The original intent was to replace the surface area. When they did that, they found an underground storage tank that had to be remediated, right? It drove the cost of that up, that repair. So working with the school department to find existing funds, we put together money and working with the town accountant from other projects to be able to put this together and meet the requirements for this.
Yeah, sounds good. I'd just say to be mindful that we'll probably see the similar resurfacing expense to all of our other playgrounds, but...
But then again, that should be just a capital cost or a maintenance cost that the school should program and plan for their playgrounds.
Is there any further discussion? Again, this is not new money, this is repurposing previously approved money from previous capital projects. Seeing no other comments, I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Seven to zero. Measure 2024-042, Finance Committee met on this and also approved for positive action unanimously. Town Manager Boyd.
Again, this was another project utilizing the same thing. We actually tried to purchase hybrid vehicles for the school department, but were unable to secure any vehicles. The waiting list is years for these types of vehicles. So went back with the schools, determined what they needed, and applied existing funds, right, to this, and then again, repurposing funds to provide them the amount they needed to purchase the vehicles. We'd ask for your support on this measure tonight.
I would like to make a motion to approve Measure 2024-042-approval to repurpose remaining funds from previous school capital improvement projects to be used for the purchase of two F-Series Super Duty pickup trucks and truck equipment.
Second. I have a motion in a second. I will say that, again, this is not two new vehicles, it is two different vehicles from what we had already, had already approved, that have become very difficult to obtain. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Gould.
So are these to replace vehicles, or we're adding to the fleet? Are two vehicles being retired?
They're two replacement vehicles. So two vehicles will be retired.
Approximately, how old are these vehicles?
I don't have that information, but I'd be happy to provide that and send that to you tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I usually support vehicles with high mileage being replaced so they can work. Thank you.
And this does follow the normal, normal town policy that any new vehicle replaces does not add to a fleet?
That's correct. That has been our standing policy, that if a department requires a new vehicle, they've got to salvage, trade, or eliminate a vehicle. We're not adding to the number of vehicles in the fleet.
Is there any further discussion? All right, I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries, seven to zero. That is it for Finance, Economic Growth, and Sustainability.
Nothing at this time.
Bylaw, Measure 2024-040.
Yes, we met to, I don't know, the technical term, put our stamp of approval on the draft from the working group for the original rewrite of Chapter 108, Article 1 in Generals, and 290 U Schedule B in the zoning bylaws to modernize our animal control bylaws in town. We got the draft, we made some proposed changes on the floor, it was adopted as amended, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Town Manager Boyd, but now it goes to the Planning Board for their stamp of approval before it, we'll have to, a new motion will have to be made to the Town Council to accept it. So a couple steps away before we see it, but the process is moving along, thanks to the efforts of our working group.
Thank you. Are you looking for a vote tonight, or is this an update?
No, just an update. Like I said, it has to go to Planning, then it'll come back to us. Where Town Manager Boyd will have to introduce a new measure to actually adopt those changes, and we can get into details about it at that time.
Very good. Up next is Rules. We owe you a report. We will be meeting, try to meet before our next council meeting to give you a report back on Subcommittee scheduling of meetings. School Committee Representative, Justin is not here tonight. Is there anybody that was at the last school committee that could speak?
I was, but, I mean, I think Mike Reddick covered what I was going to say, is the February 8th at 7 o'clock is the NHS Building Project Community Forum regarding the high school project. I think you mentioned that already. Other than that, I really don't have anything.
Excellent, thank you very much. Communication, Public Participation, and Engagement. Nothing at this time. Thank you. Local Emergency Planning, nothing at this time. RFP, Town Order Ad Hoc Committee, Counselor Gould.
So we put out the RFP, and Karen did a marvelous, wonderful, outstanding job. I'm not sure if she has anything to add. Nope, so we're waiting for responses, and we'll evaluate proposals. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right, moving on. Old Business, Measure 2024-036, FY24 Free Cash Strategy Proposal, Town Manager Board.
Council President, let me pull up the slide here I want to show you. Late last year, we brought before the Town Council a strategy proposal regarding the $5.53 million in FY24 Free Cash that was certified. We put this into basically four buckets to consider, and we asked to go to the Finance Committee to make our presentation there. It also included an executive session, right, actually, two executive sessions, one with the school committee as well. But in keeping with our past practice of paying for all of our snow balance at the end of the year, I'm asking that we create a bucket for $500,000 approximately, it could be more than that. I'm sure Mark has spent all of his initial... So, but it won't be long before he does spend it. But we'd like to add $500,000 as a placeholder for any other storm. We have a proposal for $1.272 million in capital projects, but we have gone back and revised our FY24. As we finished out the budget for FY24, we presented to you for projects that we had cash on hand or for borrowing, and we also then presented to you projects for future funding identified out of FY24 Free Cash once it was certified. And that number is 1.27, and we'll talk about that in a second. And again, any, any project that we do under that, we would come back in front of Finance Committee again, as we had stated. This also is a proposal to put $3 million into the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, with the upcoming potential for a debt exclusion vote around the high school build, and looking to be able to continue and maintain our ability to purchase capital projects. We think it's a smart move and wise investment to put money away now while we have it to be able to continue capital programs in the event a school project kicks off in earnest, which would be a significant cost to the town. Then we are addressing with safety and security, and these were briefed in the executive sessions, $781,000 worth expenses. That comes to the 5.53. Again, your vote tonight on this is for a strategy, it's non-binding, is just an agreement and concept, in that I would be able to bring back measures in alignment with this particular strategy for these dollar amounts. Again, you know, if something were to happen that we needed to spend additional funds for something that might not have been absolutely in a particular bucket that we have proposed here, you have the liberty, but this serves as a general guideline for us. So we're asking your support with this strategy moving forward.
Thank you. Finance Committee did meet on this, and we did discuss it, and we did vote in favor of this strategy. Again, it is non-binding, there are no projects attached to any of this money as of yet. Our approval of this strategy allows Town Manager Boyd and the administration in the administration to start creating ideas which fall into these categories. Is there any discussion?
I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Measure 2024-036-FY24 Free Cash Strategy Proposal.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Gould?
So, I'm not sure what the process should be. I, I don't disagree with anything here. This is all good stuff. I'm going to support it. Just, it seems that the ultimate free cash approval is the exact same as it was proposed for the last two years, for this cycle, for the previous cycle. I'd like more than a token opportunity for counselors to actually have some say in how we spend free cash rather than saying yes, no to this. So, I don't, I'm not sure what that is. I'll keep submitting agenda items. Most of them don't see the light of day, but I'll, there's got to be a way. That's all.
Sure. Any further discussion? One of the things I would say is, this came before us at council and was sent to FinCom. I think that would be the time when you would be looking for alternative ideas so we could discuss those at, at the Finance Committee meeting. But again, none of that money is spent, so you are still open to hearing from other counselors about other ways to spend this. But this is the overall strategy. And, last year, it was relatively close, but there were some things that had to get moved around out of emergency necessity monies that had to be spent on various things that actually took them out of buckets. But, for the overall strategy, anytime after you present the free cash strategy, once it gets certified in October, would that be the time to?
Counsel Vice President, so, we did present and made the call to all counselors for any input for projects, right? And, so, each time that we move forward into finance or within, and if there was an opportunity to take ideas for where funding could be put or projects that needed to be completed, or ideas that were, that was addressed or issued and dealt with and allocated or not. The other aspect of this is the council's own objective-setting meeting, where you all met and put objectives on the board. And I'll highlight one particular expenditure of free cash that's already happened. A counselor moved to put forward a, an item for mental health support within the community. We then took $281,000 out of the free cash that had been accumulated by the opioid settlement funds and allocated and put that into a specific accounting fund to be able to spend and be in compliance with all that. And we've already introduced mental health services for a call support both in the schools and that's available to the town for that. So, the, the town objective serves as a kind of a guidepost and right and left limit for us to operate, and then we took that into account where those projects were identified there. And as well, we're always open to any ideas on how this, and we were willing to come in before Town Council and present projects that have merit, that move us forward in completing those objectives and priorities that the Town Council identified.
Thank you. I believe that was your recommendation, Counselor Gould, for the mental health?
Yes, I had mentioned that as one of the goals.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion? I've seen none. I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries seven to zero. New Business, update on flooding. Welcome.
Good evening, Mark Hallwell, Director of Public Works. As you're well aware, Monday, September 11th, we received a very large rainstorm, and since then, we've had three other significant events. People need to understand, there's two types of rainstorms. The, the federal government has a reoccurrence storm level guide that they go by. Two-year storm is 3.2 inches over 24 hours. 10-year storm is 4.8 inches over 24 hours. 25-year storm, which is what your standard drainage system is designed to, to today, is 6.2 inches over 24 hours. The 50-year storm is 7.2 inches over 24 hours, and the 100-year storm, 100-year storm event, is eight and a half inches over a 24-hour period. Two types of storms. Ones that last 24 hours and you get eight inches, and ones that you get four inches in two hours. These storms that we've had, September 11th, Monday, December 18th, Wednesday, January 10th, and then Saturday, January 13th, were high-volume storms over a short duration of time. September 11th, eight inches over seven hours. So, we hit almost a 100-year storm in a third of the time. December 18th was four inches. Most of it was in about five hours. Wednesday, January 10th, we also had 5.5 inches of snow that melted away during that storm, and we got about three and a half inches. And the chief will tell you, almost all of that came within an hour, an hour and a half. It was unbelievable how much water came down. And then, we had a small storm, January 13th. It was only 2.2 inches. Most of it occurred over about four hours. Actually, I got an email from the chief that said everything's going great, and then all went to pot. But, these storms are definitely impactful. They, they've been hitting us very hard, but they're not normal storms. So, when a lot of the residents say, you know, I was flooded, our drainage systems aren't designed to handle this type of flow. New subdivisions are. New subdivisions, the road isn't, is built to 25-year storm, but their detention basins are required to meet the 100-year storm. So, a lot of the detention basins, if you drive through these neighborhoods, they actually don't have a ton of water in them because they're, they're, they're going into the basin and staying within there. But our own systems certainly failed in these storm events. We had a number of areas around town that were impacted. Payne Road, all the way from Cumberland to the cemetery, North Washington Street, at Park Street was closed down for several hours. Chestnut Street, both at the 10 Mile, 131 Chestnut. Jackson Street, over near the Falls School, that turned out to be a blockage in the line. Arnold Road was overtopped at Scotts Brook in the last two storms. 21 East Street, every time it rains. Commonwealth Avenue at Freeman, that was another blockage. Orne Street at Landry, which, we're not sure what's going on with that. We're investigating it now. School at Broad, the pipe is actually pitched in the wrong direction. We've hired an engineer to take a look at coming up with a solution because that's actually the ultimate low point. Just a little background, there used to be three ponds where Whiting's Pond is, and that drainage used to go into a brook that came from one of the ponds, went past the school and out into the 10 Mile River. They really just dug all those ponds into one good pond, put a dam up, and blockaded, bulkhead at the end of the drain. So, that's what's going on over there. And we had lots of areas in town that had flooding just due to the basins being covered over. I mean, people need to realize, we have about 3,000 basins in town. As soon as the wind starts blowing and the rain starts going, it blows the leaves into the road. The road is actually designed to get everything into the basins, and the basins get covered over, and very quickly, you have flooding that can go back to your house. So, well, yes, it is 100% the DPW's job to clear the basins. There's 3,000 of them. I have 12 guys. And when you have storms four days apart, we're trying to sweep the roads and clean up, but it's in everyone's own best interest to make sure that the basins around your house are cleared. Again, we had some receiving bodies. Whiting's Pond, Falls Pond, St. Mark's Dam, those were all flooded. Whiting's, Whiting's Pond is still overflowing. We are, you know, a week past our last storm, and it's still overflowing at, at Whiting's Pond, which means even though we have the, the winter pipe open, it's still overflowing the dam. So, we're still getting upstream water coming through us to the point that is greater than what our winter flow is coming out of the dam. I'm still getting, every day, Alexa telling me I have a flood warning in Renton. Gee, I think she's just paranoid now. So, what we're doing, again, we've, we've been going around town, trying to clear the basins, trying to sweep the roads, get, get ready for the next storm. It's much more difficult now that we have this 16-degree frost that has set in. Nothing's really getting cleaned up. We are continually trying to clear basins. We've been going out, clearing these lines anywhere where it might have been a blockage. So, we've, we've got our Jetta Truck going out and cleaning lines. That's also difficult in 16-degree weather because it uses water, you know, to pipe it, so you can't go out. We're getting some warmer weather coming up this week, thank goodness, and we're going to be continuing that in a number of areas around town, as well as going out. We've been meeting with residents on their properties to talk about it. We had a big meeting a couple of weeks ago with the state down on Payne Road, with the residents on Payne Road. I think that was a really productive meeting, just so everybody could get on the same page of what was going on. But, we are continuing. I just met with a gentleman tonight. We're working with the school department on that property that the gentleman was talking about over on Started Drive, Janus and Lyman, that are getting flooding out from the school fields because their detention systems are rather small through there. The biggest issue we have is the 10 Mile River. It's the largest impediment of our system. The sub-basins of the river, which are the neighborhoods, have grown. There's a lot of areas that have grown. Now, you have triple-deckers there and housing and residential, even all the way up to the High Street Fields that are being cleared for that. That all impacts, to some degree, the drainage system that goes into the 10 Mile River. We've been working on a NIPD's program, which is a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. We have a permit from the federal government that allows us to discharge our drainage into the river. We've been investigating all of our basin systems, our sub-areas, and we've been radiating out from the 10 Mile River. So, we've been looking at all the basins and tributary systems going into the 10 Mile River, but none of it matters when the 10 Mile River is full. You know, we, we investigated in 2015. There is a tremendous amount of sediment in there, and from 2015 through now, we've done the following. We completed our hazard mitigation plan following our report and our municipal vulnerability preparedness plan. That was completed to allow us to get both MVP grant funding and federal FEMA brick grant funding. We applied for the MVP grant funding. It was denied. They don't take, they don't do dredging projects, so we submitted to the federal brick grant. It was denied. They don't do dredging projects. We went to the congressman, Ockingclaus, for a federal earmark, which was put under FEMA. It was denied. They don't do dredging. And then it was put under again and again denied because they don't do dredging. We've got other projects out of there. We've got some long-term projects where, if you look at the two ponds near Quan's Kitchen and over on River Street, we're doing some design, some big-boy design work to recreate the wetlands over there as overflow storage areas. Ironically, we have to dredge them to do that, and that seems to be okay with them. But, we've gone, you know, Mr. Borg and I have been going around quite a bit trying to get other people's money to fix this problem. There's actually, I have a phone call tomorrow in the middle of my budget hearing because there's a new grant out called the Inland Dredging Grant Program that the state of Massachusetts put together. I'm starting to feel like they all feel bad for me. They're probably going to deny it. But, that's looking for money for, to either design or dredge some areas. The problem is, it has to be town-owned property. And out of the 1.8 miles of the 10 Mile River between Falls Pond and Whiting Street, we own less than half a mile of it. We have no easements. We have no rights. So, this grant program will cover that. We will be going after the half-mile that we have, which are adjacent to those two ponds that we have there. But, on top of the work that my guys are doing out in the field, clearing the basins and jetting the lines, this is the biggest impediment that we have. And so, I am proposing in my, my capital budget this year to start spending our own money on dredging. It is the only thing we have left. If we get all the money, I'm more than happy to spend their money on top of ours, but I'm working with the Capital Committee to try to figure out a way. And I know these are very tough, difficult economic times, and we have a lot on our plate moving forward. But I think, even if it means something else on my plate moving off, that we have to start putting a real investment into addressing this. And a couple hundred thousand dollars a year isn't going to do much. So, that will be moving forward. And again, as we said, we're getting calls from the residents today. I had a resident in my office today. We're meeting on Wednesday with residents of the St. Mark's area, setting up a meeting with Ernie to discuss this gentleman and some other gentleman's problems throughout town. And if you're coming to my office and telling me my backyard or basement flooded and it's never happened before, I got that 383 times in the last month. Literally, we have logged hundreds of calls of residents who have never had this type of flooding. And one of the concerns I have, to be honest, is that when we got the September flood, genuinely a 100-year flood that did some devastating damage, particularly on the southwest side of town, that it changed patterns. This gentleman I was speaking to today, he's never had this problem. He's had this problem three times now since September 11th. And what can happen is, you can have something that used to be in a channel, and it blows out that channel. Now, it finds an easier way to go, and it's out in the woods, and we don't know it. So, that's the next thing we have to start looking at on Payne Road, out on Lyman Street, some of these other neighborhoods, out behind the Dairy Queen, coming down the hill from Elmwood. I have no fucking idea what's going on with that. That was never like that. And now, it is, it was pushing cars all across the road. The police had to park a car in front of it so people would have to drive around it because it was pushing cars out of the lane. It wasn't like that before. I mean, 2010, we got two back-to-backs, 15 and 75-year storm a day apart from each other. That was the only time I've, my lot has ever flooded at Whiting Street. It's flooded in all four of these storms now, and something's changed. And on top of that, it's just a lot of water in a short period of time. So, I know I've had a lot of people come in blaming me. I don't make it rain or make it stop, but we are doing what we can. It is a difficult situation, especially these last couple that have come in quick succession during the winter period. But we are definitely working towards coming up with a variety of solutions for our drainage issues in town.
If we are able to dredge it all, how does that affect the rest of the 10 Mile River that isn't in our town if they don't do the same things in their towns?
So, that is something that we've been talking to City of Attleboro about, and I know Mr. Borg is approaching Plainville about, to look at as a community effort. And that does open you up to more federal funds. You know, it would probably be much better under Army Corps than FEMA, although the people at FEMA did tell me they're contemplating allowing dredging in the future just because this keeps coming up so much. And it's not, they're trying to get people to not do a maintenance project with their hard-earned dollars that are trying to revive people. But, the reason why the 10 Mile River looks like it does is because, you know, in the 70s and early 80s, they stopped allowing you to do widespread dredging in the rivers, and we were still using 50% sand-salt mix when we were sanding. We were the state where it was, and, you know, that's all gone through our drainage systems into our river. We've spent a lot of time working that sand out of our drains and taking it out of our system, but it's still in the river. So, my argument to them is, if we dredge the, the river, there's no more sand coming back. I don't use that. I haven't used it since the first year that I work here, except for on gravel roads, and, you know, it's just creating that opportunity. Attleboro and downstream, they have, you know, we have the Falls Pond Dam that, that stops us there, and that's really just, you know, everything downstream of them is more controlled. But, you know, once we get to that, that point where the water's coming at us so fast and there's no capacity upstream of Falls Pond to stop it, it just goes right over Falls Pond Dam and down into Attleboro, and we have, there's really nothing we can do after a certain point with it. Up in Plainville, they have a pond, Weatherrose Pond. It's actually a privately owned dam. There used to be three boards. Now, it's two boards. I have to go, I haven't looked lately, but it might be one board. That could be causing part of our problem. But it's not even owned by the town. It's a private dam. That, you know, they have no jurisdiction over, really. So, we do have to get together and work as one to come up with a long-term solution. In the short-term solution, I need to gain a little bit more capacity. That's why we're looking at, between Falls and Whiting, that's the area when the water comes, you only have this much free board, and once that hits and goes up, it's flooding everything out. And that's going into residents' basements. It's flooding our streets in a number of areas. And if we can get, at least get that little bit ahead, I think it will help our situation at 21 East Street, along the back of Franklin, Dexter, over at Asians over there. I mean, Asians flooded out. Their garage flooded out.
So, and Counsel Vice President, I would just add into all of this. I did send you the draft strategic framework to all the counselors of our commitment to working with Plainville and Attleboro. That's been received positively, and we're starting, because our best chance to get the Army Corps of Engineers to look at the 10 Mile is to working, you know, as a group. It's much harder for us to do this as an individual municipality. So, my discussions with the mayor of Attleboro and with the Town Manager in Plainville have all been very positive. We're going to do a joint application for this dredging and hopefully be able to get more dollars of that to do it. So, Mark's absolutely right. We have been chasing every dollar we can, but now it's time, and I agree with him, that if the funding doesn't come through, that we would begin to start doing some of this mitigation with town funds.
I certainly understand everybody's frustration and anger that has to deal with flooding, but if anyone's listening... But if anyone's listening, I, I have the utmost confidence that you're doing everything you can within your capacity to try to, you know, deal with these issues and prevent them in the future. But it doesn't sound like it's going to be a quick fix. And it's not going to be a cheap fix either. But I, I certainly thank you for everything you are doing, responsiveness from the whole town dealing with this issue, meeting with individual residents, going to their houses, seeing if there's anything we can do. Thank you very much. Counselor Donovan.
Mark, you said that we, the town only owns about a mi, a half mile of the Ten Mile River. Who owns the rest of it? Is it private?
The butters.
So then my question, I guess, is if we get the Army Corps of Engineers involved, are they going to run into the same issue that since it's privately owned, they can't work on it?
So the long-term plan, and if anyone wants to read the Ten Mile River report that we did in 2014 going into 2015, the short-term plan was dredge the river and clean it up and, and start getting going. So you get something done. And that was, we were looking at state, at the time, state dollars or a brick grant or something before we understood that they wouldn't do it. And that was, you know, $2 to $3 million, you know, from stimulus start. The long-term plan is to take a permanent easement over every inch of that, you know, 10 feet on either side, and then have Army Corps or someone else do a reconstruction project where, and this was originally all done under the Public Works programs in the 30s. But to take that, that channel, make it maybe a V-notch channel, so it gets, gains more capacity along it for the entire stretch, and then it would be owned by the town. And, and I say it's privately owned by the people. All of our drainage goes into it. All of the state's drainage goes into it. We have a responsibility. You know, this isn't like my neighbor's yard flooded into my backyard. That has nothing to do with me. Don't call. But if, you know, we're contributing to it, we have a responsibility for it. We really do.
This is, you know, since day one in 2020, it's been a priority project. We pursued funding from the congressman. We've been working every effort, and we are not going to stop until we get the positive results. And potentially, I believe Senator Feeney and Rep. Scanlon are on board, and we may be able to carve some of the funding out of this supplemental budget amount to dedicate to looking at solutions, if that's going to be possible. We're asking that question.
Other comments, questions? Counselor Gold?
Yeah, thanks for your hard work on this issue and repeated requests to the state agencies. Keep up the good fight. This 2014 study, is that the most recent one?
That was. That was, we, we hired an engineering firm to look at the river. We went through, and we actually, following that, we, we've done some work in preparation for the design work that we have for the first section of the river, which is from Falls Pond up to about Orange Street. So we, we've done some work on that, looking at how much sedimentation's out in the, the river. We've done some sampling tests of that because there is contaminants with it within the sediment itself, not the river, but in the sediment, which is in places two to three feet deep, in something that should be a five, six-foot-deep channel.
Did they suggest any other courses of action besides dredging?
Well, again, we, we had short-term and long-term. The short-term was dredging it, and the, the long-term was reconstructing the entire length of the channel.
The actual history of the Ten Mile River is that when the 30s project, in the 1930s, they came in and the, they straightened it out in a number of places and reclaimed a lot of wetlands that are now owned properties on it. So it's time to go back and look at the actual design of the river to make it be able to accommodate the current, you know, 100-year event.
Any computation done on the cost of the taking for 10 feet in both directions?
Give everyone a dollar. Otherwise, you can keep it.
You have to assume the liability. If you own, if you're in a butter and you own the property, you own the contamination and liability. This is an opportunity to think that we believe all the butters and any property owners of the Ten Mile River would be happy to allow an easement. And it's something, if necessary, the town would should consider eminent domain if required.
The, the estimate we had, sort of back of the envelope in 2014, 2015, was a 15 to $20 million project to take all of it, completely reconstruct the walls with a, a V-channel going, going through there. We have three culverts that the state owns that literally, I don't know, I think everybody should take some time and go over and take a look at one of them. They're the ones that cross between Handy and Harmon at 72 Elm and the U-Haul going into 21 East Street. You know, they're about, I think they're like 12 feet wide, four or five feet high, and there's about this much room under them where the water comes through. That sand all has to be removed, and it all has to be removed manually, which is, you know, bypassing the flow and going in there and sucking all the sand out of there. It's about $400,000 itself. I asked the state, they said, we want to support the project, but we don't have any money.
Counselor Smalling?
I echo everyone else's statement of saying, thank you for all the work that you're doing. I can only imagine, because I've actually had similar phone calls. I don't even know how they have my number.
I gave it to them.
Yeah. I knew it was you, Mark. I knew it was you. And actually, it, it's, it's kind of creepy. Like, it is, like, from September till now, the amount of rain that we're getting. I've never wanted snow so much in my life.
And now everyone's like, at least it's not snow. And I'm like, snow? I can, I have somewhere to put it.
Yeah. I wish, you know. But with that said, I don't think it's stopping. And, you know, and as childhood would always say, you know, April flowers may, or May showers bring April flowers, or whatever it is. It's only going to keep happening. I am one of those people that get freaked out every time it rains because my basement loves water for some reason. And most recently, I am one of those people that, you know, I had all, did all the precautions. I'm getting water in places I've never had it before. What scared me most recently, though, in our downtown area, you know, that last one in September, that was crazy. It was like, you know, a river downtown. But I was just told last night, actually, that Pace Plaza, for instance, that first level of condos, not the retail businesses, but the condos, the water pressure was so much, they were getting water into the, they lost 12 units.
Right. We're, we're looking into that with them, because I think, right, but they have downspouts from the roof. And I think that downspouts are getting backed up and backing up into that first floor.
I know the retail businesses were having issues coming up. All I'm saying is, to what you were saying, I know you're both working on this, and I know it's something that you're trying to expedite as, as best as possible. But this, to me, is a really great opportunity to be as communicative as possible to our public. So every time there's a new step or a new chance or anything, because I feel like you're going to get more of those calls. So as more transparent as possible, whether it's Facebook or our website, like, just saying, here's what we're constantly doing. Here's our next steps, I think might help alleviate some of the stress, especially when the first drop falls. So.
And the, the problem you were answering, and I was talking to the gentleman earlier, is, you know, the first night you, like you said, the first time you get, get water in your basement, you're absolutely paranoid the next time that it's going to happen. And, and people are calling me up nervous, you know, we got like three-quarters of an inch coming, you know, this weekend. People are panicking over it. They, they just think that it's, it's just going to keep coming. And it might.
Counselor Shannon?
So obviously, the Ten Mile River is a huge and expensive process. But there are a number of areas that you mentioned that are flooding that aren't related to the Ten Mile River, right? Are there, are there efforts being put into looking into cost to potentially fix that as far as adding drains or anything like that?
You know, one of the biggest ones right now, just because it's had some loss twice over at 131 Chestnut, which is on the Elm Street side of Chestnut Street, across Route 1 from the police station. That area's flooded a couple of times. That does have a drain pipe that when the Falls Pond is full, the drain pipe is actually under four feet of water. So that, that's how that drainage was constructed 100 years ago. And this is the problem, is that, you know, the, you have two problems. One, you know, stuff is like, oh, it'll get there, when you only have like nine things going into it. But then everyone daisy chains off of it, you know, for, you know, 100 years, and that's what you end up with. So there are distinct areas that we keep having the same problem. If it's not a blockage, we're looking at, you know, what do we do for a, a long-term plan? But, so, school street's one of them. I know it's pitching backwards. We knew that after the September storm. We went out and surveyed it. It is literally, it's at 101.8 is the elevation. The river at the other end of Broad Street is 108, like, 5. It's like above that location. It's actually lower than the river at that point. And it makes it up by the time it gets down to, behind Julie Boyce's house at 299 North Washington Street, just because.
Julie will be thrilled.
It's got, it goes backwards, and then it picks up pitch going the rest of the way so it can get there. So we decided to hire an engineer. We've already sat down with them to go through and come up with a solution for that, because we couldn't find one without doing an extensive survey, because you really have to look at where else can we make this water flow through. So we're going through, we have, you know, when we had the September storm, I was with Mike and the fire chief, and I literally had a, a map of the town, and we just circled areas where it was flooded. It was very extensive in that storm. That type of storm, you're going to get that. There's nothing you can do about it when you have eight inches in a couple of hours. But these smaller storms, we really have been paying attention to what's happening. And like I said, I've been sending our guys out to each one of them, be like, find out what the problem is. If the problem is an undersized drain, you know, there's a solution to that. But sometimes your undersized drain is followed by undersized drains for the next half mile, you know. And drainage is an expensive thing to increase, just because it has to go, you know, like this. You know, water you can bring up and down and move around. Drain and sewer have to go in a, in a straight line, and it becomes costly when you're increasing the size of that. You have to move water lines. You have to move sewer services if you're going by them. It just gets a lot more expensive to do that type of work if you're going in, in a long stretch. So not to say we're not going to do it. I haven't told anybody it's too expensive, but those things all take time and money, which is finite.
Understood. Thank you.
Finney up there?
Yeah. I wasn't aware that there was ponds over by Quan's Kitchen. I didn't notice there was a pond after it rained.
They're not anymore. They're filled in with sediment. But if you're driving down Route 1 across from Dunkin' Donuts, that's a pond. Literally, if you go to the edge of the road, I wouldn't do it because it's dangerous on those poison ivy. If you look over the edge, there's a plunge pool, which is just a dugout area about the size of these desks here, that we had an excavator come in and dig out, because at the bottom of it, four feet below the sediment, is the outlet pipe from Route 1. And it was backing up into a trailer park across the street that used to be a pond. If you ever come into my office, I have a really nice map on there, and it shows that area where those trailer parks are, and that little place that sells, like, the concrete dogs. That was all a pond, up until like 1950, maybe a little bit earlier than that. But that was a, a straight-out pond. They filled it in.
I just noticed that the, the houses that were behind that, on that side street, their, their backyards were just, I mean, they were in.
Right. So you have the, the, the river that comes down through there. That's, the river's actually on town property. That, those ponds, they're not ponds anymore, but they were wetlands before. And up until 1973, they used to go out every year and burn them, because they, stuff, the fragmites or whatever would grow up on them, and they just burn them, so you don't have detritus growing on top of each other. And they don't do that anymore, and we can't dredge it. So it just builds up on itself.
That's crazy.
One other thing, just quickly, Mr. Borg mentioned the Big Red 311. It really does help to get this stuff. If you have pictures of it while it's happening, just to see it, you know, while it's happening, and just give us a good narrative of what it is, just so we know. You know, four weeks later, when they say, my whole place flooded, it's not really, you know, overly helpful to me. But if you're, you're getting some, especially if you're getting it storm after storm after storm, to know where it's coming from. And it might be something, sometimes it is a blockage, and we don't know about it. And literally, if we don't know about it, we're not going to go find it. We've got too much other stuff to do.
That is it. That is a great segue into our next agenda item, a review and update of the Big Red 311.
Council Vice President, members of the council.
Thank you.
Sustaining our commitment to come back to you quarterly and discuss and provide you an update on 311. Chanel is here tonight, and I know she's been waiting patiently, and we thank you for that. But, look, I, I just want to say that absolutely thrilled with everything that's going on with constituent services and how we're responding to folks. There is no better face in town to represent us than what Chanel does. And I hear that on a continuous basis. So I'll just turn it over to her, because I'm done talking, and let her finish this up.
Thank you. So my name's Chanel. I've been here, working for the town since November of 2022. Since I've been here with the work of Manager Borg and the department heads, we've implemented the Big Red 311, also known as C Click Fix, which is a reporting platform for all of our residents, even if you're not a resident of North Attleboro, to report any problem in town. Since I've been here, we, I have personally received 612 complaints. I've closed out 556 of those complaints. I currently have 56 open at the moment that we are working on. As you can see from our little chart, right now, what's trending is the flood reports and potholes, which is mainly due from the flooding that we've had. But to Mark's point, the Big Red 311 has been working, because every situation that he's mentioned previously, I've already known about, and we've been working together to address all of those situations that have come to our attention. On a daily basis, I'd say I'm getting a minimum of 10 to at least 20 people, whether they're walking into the town hall or ca, or calling into the town hall, needing help or assistance with something. If there's residents that aren't able to use our system or need help with it, I've personally entered 75 just on my own to help them. So I have all of the reports to back that, if anyone would like to review those. And we've basically just created a system that works. And anytime there's a report that comes in, I'll receive it. I'm the liaison between the department heads and the residents to just close that gap and resolve any problems that they have and follow up with it. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
There's so many people that come into the office that actually ask Chanel. Is Chanel here?
Yeah.
I'm talking to her on the phone.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Gold?
Of course. I think this is great that we have an oms bud, un, oms buds woman, so to speak, to, to help the residents know what's going on. Are most of them pleased with the outcome?
I would say so. I actually recommended that maybe I even do like a little QR code to review myself after their.
That's a good idea.
Right. After their visit or encounter with their problem, and then just kind of let the council or the manager know their experience, that we were able to help them. Yeah.
So how many open issues did you have addressed total?
So 556 I closed out. I had 612 that I received. Right now, I have 56 open.
And, and prior to you, where did those people go to get help?
Karen, which I don't even know how she did it. I honestly don't. I really don't. She had a good system in place, but with me working next to Karen, yeah, she is just nonstop. So I said, Karen, this is like three jobs in itself, just like what she does. So hopefully, I'm helpful to you, Karen. But before, that was all going to Karen, and I don't know how, between Karen and Gail.
And just for the, for the council's perspective, we did close the action needed report process. That was the written fill-out-a-piece-of-paper, right? We moved entirely to the online platform. But if you, and as Chanel pointed out, and you saw in her stat, if you come in and you can't fill it out, or you don't have access to a computer, right, she'll do it for you and, and put it in there and, and track it. And then she becomes the, the responsible, you know, agent to make sure that person gets done. And if they want follow-up, I've heard her call, you know, residents and follow back up with, hey, it was put in. This is what our feedback, but we no longer take the paper report. We'll enter it in, because this allows us to track it, categorize it, look at the number of days it takes to resolve a particular issue, right? And you can see from the, the different things that the flooding aspect, right, was huge. And with the, the potential for supplemental budget funding available this spring to respond to both our residents and businesses, we now have a database of who asked or reported problems and issues to be able to substantiate their claims when they go to ask for this money and reimbursements. So this is a huge success, but it is a full-time job. It's fully engaged, right? But we're committed to it. We like the process, the department heads. Most of the open cases are, you know, abandoned vehicles right now, that we're trying to run down and make sure that they're in compliance with the law. So.
And that next slide actually shows yesterday, somebody on Facebook had mentioned how well the system works. And then today, I received that complaint. After somebody had mentioned the Big Red 311, how to report a problem, I received that complaint on that same topic, just from, I think, everything North Attleboro.
So word of mouth is working. They're, they're starting to do it.
Yeah, the system works.
Don't report this on Facebook.
Let me go on Facebook. Excellent. Does anybody else have questions?
Do you and the residents come in really angry? They always leave.
Residents come in really angry. They always leave happy after talking to her. She's spent so much
Time.
Time and so kind, and they really like that. She's still mad, they act like they know.
They just want to know that there will be a resolution, which there is going to be, but it sometimes might take time, and they just need to know what that timeline is or where this problem's going. And that's up to me to work with the departments, touch base with the resident, and just communication.
I think that is key. As Counsel Flabogan noted earlier, open communication, speaking to people face-to-face, dealing with their issues. That's why we're all here doing this job to help the people here in North Attleboro. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add, Counsel Gould?
Just briefly, I saw potholes. One of the frequent complaints. I'm just wondering if anyone knows what the average time to repair a complained pothole would be.
We go out every Thursday, uh, generally. If it's not an emergent, uh, pothole, we go out every Thursday and, uh, take everything off the C Click Fix list. Or we also have our own work order system. So anything that's come in, uh, typically gets done by Thursday. And then on Friday, my assistant director drives around on Chestnut.
Thank you.
Addresses are tough sometimes.
But I just recommend everybody use the geo-tagging feature on your phone and take a picture of it, right? Because that that allows us to get the right pothole that you reported. And I know Mark's team's out there, and they see other ones, they fill it into. They're not letting that hot mix go to waste.
One thing I will mention is when I noticed the most recent flooding that, um, occurred, residents had called in, and by the time I had actually immediately called over to Evan that or Mark or Steve, who's always responsive, they were already on that street. So it was great that the DPW is really responsive. It's just a lot to address. So I don't think everyone notices that. But when you're working internally, you do see that, um, communication is key here.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Measure 2024 dash 045, Town Manager Borg. Thank you very much.
Council Vice President, members of the council, we're asking for a referral to the Economic Development Subcommittee for this item. This is the Allen Avenue property. We have a proposal that we're working on, as you can see there. Um, we'd like to take this and potentially a couple of other parcels. This parcel list is gonna shift slightly a little bit. I kind of encroached on some conservation land that I was trying to sell. Uh, but we will adjust that in FinCom. But unless I can get the Conservation Commission to to agree with it, uh, we think there's an opportunity, right? There's approximately uh, 20-plus acres in this area at a value of about $5.3 million, uh, that might be able to provide and enhance, uh, economic development. So, but again, we'll modify and and, you know, have that discussion with Conservation Commission. Uh, I don't think they're gonna give up their their property, but we'll we'll figure this out. Uh, and then like, but this is the process that by which, once this is given to the town manager for the purpose of sale, I can put the RFP out and begin the process of letting Allen Avenue become whatever it's going to become.
And you are seeking a referral to Economic Development. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to refer Measure 2024 dash 045 dash request that multiple parcels of land located on Allen Avenue be transferred from the town council, from the town council for the purpose for which it is held to the town manager, uh, referred to the Economic Growth and Sustainability Subcommittee for review.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Gould?
Just like to, I'd be very interested in who's, we don't have to talk about it all now, but, uh, just who's buying it, what other options were considered, did we consider holding on to it? Um, but just just those things, I'd be interested to hear when it comes back before we vote on it.
Certainly. Any further comments? All right. I'll go to vote. All those in favor for the referral, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Motion carries seven to zero. Measure 2024 dash 047, General Capital Improvement Plan Projects, FY24 Free Cash, Town Manager Board.
I'm flipping to it. Standby, sir. This is a measure that, um, on the heels of the approval of the Free Cash Strategy, uh, is looking to spend $776,000 of the FY24. These were all previously presented capital improvement projects, um, to, uh, the town council during the FY24 budget process. Uh, this would be funded from the 1.27, uh, $2 million in that bucket from the Free Cash Strategy. We're asking for a referral to the Finance Subcommittee to start these projects.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to refer Measure 2024 dash 047 dash General Government Capital Improvement Plan Projects, uh, FY 2024 Free Cash to the Finance Subcommittee for review.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Counsel Gould?
Again, I know we'll talk about this later. Can someone just remind me which two projects these are?
This was a shift, a shift commander vehicle for fire, uh, the Mason Field Bas-
Two proj-
Excuse me?
Sorry.
One, two. It's four.
Okay.
Four projects. Shift Commander Vehicle, Mason, uh, Field Improvement for Pickleball, Truck Replacement, and the demolition of 268 Smith Street.
Okay, yes, sorry, I interrupted you.
Of course.
Yeah, I think that'll make sense to talk about. Thanks.
Anyone else? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the referral to the Finance Subcommittee, say aye.
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 Opposed? Staining? Motion carries seven to zero. Measure 2024 dash 050, Authorization for Payment of an FY23 Invoice in the Amount of $8.86 for the Adjustment of the June Blue 2020 Vision Insurance for Human Resources. This is normally something Town Manager Borg could handle himself without our involvement. However, because it crosses fiscal years, he needs our approval. This is not being sent anywhere other than right here. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Measure 2024 dash 050, Authorization for Payment of an FY23 Invoice in the Amount of $8.86 for Adjustment for the June Blue 2020 Vision Insurance for Human Resources.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries seven to zero. Measure 2024 dash 051, Authorization for the Payment of an FY23 Invoice in the Amount of $875 for Costs Associated with Securing the Webster Building for the Building Department. Again, normally something Town Manager Borg could transfer on his own. However, this crosses fiscal years. Town Manager Board?
This was a safety issue, um, with this particular property. We did have an incident that fire responded, police responded, where there was an individual, a very, a child that fell through the boards. It's been, um, wooded up, boarded up since then. Uh, we will place the cost of that as the, on the, and lean it against the property and collect once the property's ultimately sold, repaired, or, uh, they come clean and pay all their taxes.
I'd like to make a measure, a motion to, um, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve Measure 2024 zero dash zero five one, Authorization for Payment of an FY23 Invoice in the Amount of $875 for Costs Associated with Securing the Webster Building for the Building Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counsel Gould?
I was just gonna ask what's that, what building is that? But I Googled it, and it looks like it's the building up on Broadway.
It is, Webster Mill.
Yeah, definitely in support of that, at least.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Motion carries seven to zero. Measure 2024 dash zero five two, Appropriation Request for the Utilization of FY23 Retained Earnings for Comcast PEG Access for North TV for Additional Funding for Measure 2023 dash zero seven three for the North Attleboro High School Press Box in the Amount of $8,335.50. Again, these are retained earnings, um, which we have to authorize the release of, but they are not taxpayer dollars. These are rate payer.
Specifically rate, uh, the money that is collected from the cable fees that are paid, uh, by Verizon and Comcast, uh, to North TV. Uh, this is a project that we had originally I had approved, and then the, uh, the town accountant had, uh, sent me an email demanding that I withdraw it, and I did, because this is retained earnings. Uh, and much like, um, Free Cash or any other, uh, that requires town council action to be able to do this regardless of the amount. Um, we're asking for a referral to the Finance Subcommittee, uh, for this particular motion, uh, to complete this project.
I would like
Are we going to finance on this?
Yeah.
Yes, you have. It's retained earnings. You're required to go to finance.
After finance, okay.
I would like to make a motion to refer Measure 2024 dash zero five two, Appropriation Request for the Utilization of FY23 Retained Earnings for Comcast PEG Access for North TV for Additional Funding for Measure 2023 dash zero seven three for the North Attleboro High School Press Box in the Amount of $8,335.50.
Second.
Referred to the to the Finance Committee for review.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will go to a vote on the referral. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries seven to zero. Measure 2024 dash zero five three, Request that a parcel of land described as Map 34 Lot 555 be transferred from the town council for the purpose for which it is held to the town manager for the purpose of sale. Town Manager Board?
Council Vice President, members of the council, this is, um, a request to have you authorize me a specific parcel that is owned by the town. Um, if you'll look at the the second page in the diagram, this is a new development. Um, I think it's the Jackson, uh, subdivision, Sperry Lane, uh, Jackson Farms, there it is. And, uh, we were approached, and I am in support. This is a landlocked piece of town property adjacent to Interstate 95. All current zoning, uh, rules and regulations would still apply even after the sale. Uh, so you wouldn't see like another digital billboard in the, you know, being placed in this, uh, because it would be restricted. Uh, but we're asking for you to, uh, send this to Economic Development, uh, to discuss this so we can put this out to bid. We have a resident who has purchased the property is interested in buying the adjacent back lot to it, and it would then put that property onto the tax rolls.
I would like to make a motion to refer Measure 2024 dash zero five three, Request that the parcel of land described as Map 34 slash Lot 555 be transferred from the town council for the purpose for which it is held to the town manager for the purpose of sale, referring this to the Economic Growth and Sustainability Subcommittee for review.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the referral? Seeing none, I'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries seven to zero. Measure 2024 dash zero five four, Award Sisters at Heart $25,000 of ARPA NEU Funding. Town Manager Board?
Council Vice President, members of the council, we're asking for a referral to the Finance Subcommittee for this effort. This is to award $25,000 in ARPA funding to Sisters at Heart, an organization that we are in a public-private partnership with for the installation of AED devices throughout. They originally received a $50,000 earmark, uh, from Representative Scanlon and Senator Feeney. Um, 50% of that was clawed back under the 9C cuts that were currently. Current balance in available, uh, ARPA non-entitlement unit funds is, uh, $600,000. Uh, we also have a little bit more coming in, about $18,000 from the Big Red Bucks, uh, that were unspent, uh, during that program, and that's being returned to the town. So we'll have that as well. But we'd like to, um, continue the public-private partnership with Sisters at Heart and install, uh, four additional, uh, AEDs that were planned. But right now, uh, we'd like to be able to push the funding to them. Uh, this is at no taxpayer expense from property taxes or, uh, budget from the town. This was from federal government. Uh, we do have a, uh, an obligation to have the funding, uh, spent or obligated by 31 December of this year, uh, for that remaining $600,000.
I would like to make a motion to refer Measure 2024 dash zero five four, Award Sisters at Heart $25,000 of ARPA NEU Funding to be referred to the Finance Subcommittee for review.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counsel Gould?
Just is there like a council rule that whether it was under, over $10,000?
20.
Well, that's your free spending rule. But we have to refer it to Finance Committee if it's under
No.
Over $10,000 or?
So generally, present-year funding projects, regardless of the amount, have to go to finance?
Funding projects. So that's why we could vote the $8 bill. That's not a funding request.
Correct. That is a transfer to pay a previous year bill.
Okay. I mean, I
Something which, had it happened during the current fiscal year, Town Manager Board could have done it on his own.
Yeah. I mean, it seems, I like the fiscal conservatism by referring it and coming back. It just seems like something like this or the North TV one could have passed tonight, saving everyone time.
I think North TV has to because it's retained earnings. Um, I would agree with you on this specific issue, but the reason that we have the rule is so we don't have issue-to-issue changes. All funding proposals go to finance just for review. Um, there is no time crunch on this.
No.
Correct. Okay. Uh, had it been a time crunch, we could have treated it as an emergency if we were losing the funding, if the project was going to be going away, if we didn't fund it, we could have handled it directly. But in order to stick with the rules that we have established, everything goes to finance. But I do not foresee a major issue from my
Fair enough. I just think maybe in the future, we could say anything under $25,000, we could decide if it goes to finance or not. But
Talk to the chairperson of rules and see if he's interested in doing it. Wait a minute. Do I have, do I have a motion yet? Yes, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the referral to Finance Subcommittee? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries seven to zero. That is the end of our agenda. I will take a motion. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carries seven to zero. We are adjourned at 9:30. Thank you very much.